This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
So, uh, since the, we spoke a little before and, uh, uh, since the public safety portion of this is going to go, or a little bit longer, uh, we decided we're going to start with the unclassified. We can do that pretty quickly. It will do dispatch, police, fire. So that's the order that we're looking at. Um, so, uh, before we get started with anything, um, is there any members of the public who'd like to say anything before we get started? Go ahead.
Hi, um, Kathy Wuzinski, O'Leary Drive. Um, I wanted to really focus again as last night on the idea that we need to focus on what the city needs and not spur of the bus extras. So obviously what we're talking about tonight is one of our priorities. It should be fully funded, um, water and sewer schools, um, but there's a lot in the budget that's not needed there. And I think we need to back off of some of it and really focus on the sewers that need to be fixed as they are, um, in desperate need of repairs and they are so far a date. It's scary. So I would just ask that.
Okay.
Limits.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes. Hi, hi, my name is Jeanne Powellson and I'm at 277 Main Street. And I just also want to just mention that it should be a priority to take care of the infrastructure, uh, before other housing projects. As everything that infrastructure lays a foundation for everything else, it's been a long time since that's been taken care of. Thank you very much.
Uh, Mayor, do you have anything to say before we get started? Okay. Uh, so like I said, uh, we're going to roll off with unclassified and, uh, so, uh, if you've been sort of going line item. Sorry, who wants to sort of give a summary of what we're looking at from here?
This collaboration between, um, the human resources department and the treasury department. So I can tuck out my pieces and then have just kind of.
Great.
Yeah. So first I want to just talk about, um, workers comp and 111F. Um, so usually these kind of numbers are a little bit of like rolling numbers and hard to calculate early in the year, but, uh, we've been pretty good with estimating where we're going to be at the percentage increases over the last couple of years. Um, so usually I'm competing where like eight, 10% every year for an increase. So that covers all of our employees, um, for safety, 111F, we do, that's for fire and police. Um, we have a $10,000 deductible that we pay to our insurance company every year. Um, plus the premium for the insurance and then will happen is once we hit that $10,000 deductible, the insurance company will pick up the rest of the cost.
Now that eight to 10%, is that driven by increases in healthcare costs? Is it the incidence of the necessity of work?
Has nothing to, for the most part, it has nothing to do with us directly. Usually it has to do with increased admin fees, um, yeah, increased health insurance costs throughout the years, you know, those types of things, but nothing necessarily related to us. We do about two years ago, we switched insurance companies for workers compensation.
Okay.
And now we do have some reward opportunities which could potentially get us money back. So every year this last year, we just completed one, um, like a workers comp audit. So they'll go through, comb through our employees and then we'll get credits that we can put towards this fiscal year. So they'll send us the full premium and I feel like you can deduct this from it.
Great.
Um, and then other parts to touch on would be the chapter 32B, which that includes for, um, school and city, both active and retirees insurance. That's going to encompass your health insurance, your dental insurance and your life insurance, all of which the city contributes to. So, um, we over calculated a little bit this year for the school expense. So we didn't really have to do an increase of that based on what we anticipate to spend by the end of this fiscal year. Again, this stuff is kind of a little hard to calculate because it, it changes so much throughout the year. Like we anticipate, so this year we had a health, um, we're having an eight percent health insurance increase, which is pretty standard across the board. Um, GIC was doing 6.6% and Maya, I think was doing, uh, I'm sorry, Maya was doing 6.6% and the GIC was doing a 9.6%. So we're right in the middle. And that eight percent really just helps to keep the Hampshire County Group Insurance Trust that we use healthy and, um, you know, make sure we're able to keep on funding it forward. Um, so we have eight percent in that dental was about a 5.5% increase this year and our life insurance, we have a contract for another two years. So there's been no change in that. But this number, like it's a calculation based off of our current enrollments and what we spent over the last year. But if we have people enroll in more family plans or something like that, you know, those numbers can change. Um, so we estimate the best we can, um, and this is what we came up with. Um, with, and we have the unemployment, um, at $75,000. That's just, um, we put $75,000 in every year and then paid towards that. Um, yeah.
Okay. So what I'm hearing here is that for a lot of this stuff, these are our contributions towards various plans and insurances that we have. And to some extent we are hostage to whatever the, those companies, like if they increase their rates, then our options are to pay it or to try and find a different company, which may not always be an option or a good idea.
Yeah, typically yes. I will say like we were part of USI insurance for our workers comp and our liability insurance a couple of years ago, and it seemed like a good idea. The previous director had switched over there because it seemed like they had a good rate, everything, but then really the cost ended up being a lot more in the long run. So the mayor suggested we look back into moving back to Maya and Maya insurance, um, really they work very specifically with municipalities. They're huge advocates for the municipalities. They offer a lot of, um, resources and a lot of, like I said, we get rewards. So we get a lot of money back. So some of it is like, we get what we put in so that as much effort as we put in, like we created a safety committee this year. That gives us reward money. Uh, we take trainings, you know, I said now all those trainings that everyone should try to take. Though that gives us money. So we do have some control over it, but to a certain extent, yes, we are at the mercy of the insurance companies.
Okay. Uh, but it sounds like you're doing what you can, where you can to help control those costs. Awesome.
And I've been fortunate enough to, to be part of the executive committee of the Hampshire County Group Insurance Trust, which I think has really been helpful. You know, East Hampton is a bigger municipality in that unit. Um, so it has given us a pretty decent voice in that, you know, originally they were looking at 11% increase this year. And we were really able to negotiate that down to the eight percent. So.
Great. Well, thank you for that. Um, I am recording. Uh, thanks for the double check. Um, you know what? I'm going to triple check, but I did hit start recording. It says stop recording. So I think we're good.
Yeah, you can see the red.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Thanks for double checking though. It's always good to be on these things. Um, okay. Uh, Jessica, do you want to pick it up?
Um, so the retirement.
Or, oh, I'm so, so sorry. Connie, do you have a question?
Yeah. Is, um, you have any concerns moving forward with?
I don't have any concerns. I mean, I know.
I have a big adjustments now, but.
Yeah.
As we move forward, like.
I know eight percent hits everybody hard. I get that. It hits the city hard and it hits our employees hard. Um, unfortunately that seems to be kind of the norm right now. So, you know, we're doing the best we can with that. Um, it is always hard with things like calculating insurance because all I can do is use what I currently have. Um, so it's, like I said, it's a rolling number. You just don't know. It can change so quickly. Um, based on how many babies people are having or how many retirees pass away, you know, you just never know. So that stuff can be hard. And I think I really, this year was very diligent to track, um, our expenses in that as best as possible. So I feel pretty confident in what we have. Is there always a potential to come back for appropriation? Yes. But I feel good about it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Um, so can you give me for our retirement is our retired contribution to our retirement, um, board? The school Medicare and Medicare tax is required. It's a 1.45 match that the employees also pay 1.45. Um, the school Medicare is, uh, the general consensus is it like goes up three to four percent every year. Just with salaries increasing, new employees coming in. Um, so school was good. Medicare actually is, there's an appropriation going for city council this year. So there was an increase on what was actually going to be paid this year because of the increased request for next year. Um, the OPEB contribution, city school enterprise, that's a standard 10% over what is the previous year.
And, uh, and how are we doing on, on the OPEB stuff? Like just timeline, timeline wise?
Um, so we have a plan for the contribution and that really counts in what they do for the actuarial report and the bond rating, as long as you have sort of a plan for it. Um, actually we just had our investment person in today and she said the OPEB trust is really in good shape.
It's good.
Ninety percent of it over the last year.
Mayor?
Uh, if I could just add, uh, general guidance from the state and, um, the government finance, um, officer association is to meet the pension obligations first and then worried about OPEB because there is no mandate or obligation, uh, on the city right now for OPEB. So across the state, which you'll see is, uh, season towns following that to get the amount of money, uh, in the retirement accounts first to get it a hundred percent funded and then switch over to OPEB. Our strategy over the last six, seven years has been by financial policy that, um, there's a bigger contribution into retirement following that with the OPEB plan to not, um, really be far, far behind once the retirement is, is fully funded to, to really take advantage of the market and see what we can, we can do. Um, and just start, uh, start a, sort of a good financial, uh, plan, which does, it helps our overall financial profile. Um, with the bond rating, but also, uh, a general stability that, that the state DLR and DLS, our Department of Revenue and Department of Local Services, uh, take a look and watch on, uh, on the city and then they report out on the dashboard, which will be the chart.
Great. And I guess then my phone, this is, uh, you said this the other day, but just as a, a reminder, where, what's our town timeline on fully funding our pension obligations?
So it's a little, I mean, last year we were, um, we did really well and we were looking at 29 or so. Um, that's, it's, it's depending on the market. So we were the highest person, we were one of the highest communities in the state and the highest in, um, Western Massachusetts as far as funding, um, like eighty, eighty-nine percent. But, you know, the, the caution there is our contributions are consistent. The market is.
Right.
So the market and what we invest in is very conservative and the state, you know, kind of lists out what we can, um, invest in. So it's not like we're going into junk bonds, um, but we're going into very tried and true low risk investments. And some years we, you know, do really well and because we more assertively fund our retirement on the interest compounds. Um, and that, that's one of the reasons why we try to put almost as much money as the city can afford in retirement, uh, to honestly meet that obligation. But, um, the year, you know, depending on the, the market and our forecasting, uh, the retirement board is, we're very fortunate to have a great board, both, uh, the auditor and treasurer on that board, but, uh, the chair, um, Mr. Emerson is, and the rest of the board is, is just spot on with our policies and, and whatnot. And, uh, just to try to care, um, yeah, the retirees.
Great. Great to hear. Okay. Any?
Yeah. So same question. Um, any concerns that you have, like other things like that we should be thinking about moving forward? I know this is what we've done this year, but also just thinking.
No.
Okay. Sounds good. Uh, Councilor Trail, do you have any questions?
Pretty straightforward.
Well, then I think I can cut the unclassified people loose. I'm sure they have lots of other things they need to do.
Unless they want to stay.
Unless you just like love hanging out and talking about the budget. In this case, you're more than welcome to stay.
Thank you so much. I don't want to hang out. I appreciate it.
Cool. Um, I don't know why this, this TV keeps sort of cutting out. So if folks that are on, uh, Google meets, if that looks weird to them, uh, I apologize. I'm not exactly sure what to do about it. Um, but it seems like it's coming back pretty quickly. Uh, okay. So now we're on to safety. Pad?
The track pad would be.
Oh.
If you don't touch it for.
Okay. So I'll just fiddle with the mouse a lot and hopefully that'll take care of it. Okay. So we had been asked to address dispatch first.
I'm.
Let's take it away.
Um, so, um, we just became regional dispatch center with Southampton. Um, with that being said, um, I hired, um, two additional dispatchers in the fall. I mean, just hired three dispatchers in the spring, um, April 1st. And, um, our, but our grant has also from state nine one one. Um, we had an increase in that. Originally I was approved for $87,033. And because we went regional with Southampton and, um, we got additional $145,405, a total of 232, 438. So with that is covering basically all of my wages for my additional dispatchers. So we don't go in the red and the overtime. Um, additional that the $8,890, $8,800, um, for nine one one training that covers, um, the mandatory 16 hours of training on top of the wages. So that's not taken out of my budget either. I believe the increase here is due to the additional dispatchers that were hired and, um, depending on the contract, our step increase of, of July 1st. We have 12 full-time dispatchers and one part-time dispatcher, including myself.
Okay. So it's a mixture of the stepping cases and the, yes. Well, that makes a lot of sense. Um, just out of curiosity, like so far how's, like, uh, with the regionalization, like, uh, how would you say the, the actual call volume has increased, uh, relative to the, you know, additional, uh, revenue that you, you know, is coming in?
It's definitely increased quite a bit, even for East Hampton calls have increased, um,
Right.
With additional dispatchers, that's going to be, that's a huge thing where we have enough to stop on the desk, two to three dispatchers per shift to answer the calls for Southampton and East Hampton Police and Fire Department.
I think it's important to point out that the, it's, uh, support incentive grant for state nine one one because we regionalized as of July 1st will jump from 87,000, um, to 412,000, I think. Just, but it's just over 400,000. Um, so that will help with the, um, significantly that'll help with the overtime for the additional dispatchers and the training.
Right.
So that's very significant.
That is. Okay. Super. Uh, councillors, do you have any questions about dispatch?
I'm going to ask a question and I'm, the way I'm going to phrase it is going to be like, ooh, but I'm just going to ask you. Okay. Do you think this is a fair budget?
Yes, I do.
So there's no like, something's missing or ooh, we should have had something here or there, or you're, you're concerned about something.
Um, I'd say the only thing that I can see maybe in the future we concern is the, um, the training budget. The amount, because of the amount of training that is required and dispatched with all the, um, being updated on all the courses and, um, the laws and stuff that dispatchers need to know. That's the only thing that I could see, but other than that.
So the dispatch education training down.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's very helpful.
Counselor, I think if we didn't have the nine one grant, then take a pretty big argument for more, much more significant role plus dispatch budget. But, uh, we're very fortunate that the state, uh, really assists that department.
Okay. Yeah. And just keeping, you know, keep in touch about that. If it looks like this is going to be a thing, you know, the sooner we know about it, the sooner we can start preparing for.
Yeah.
You know.
But we do get paid from the state also for.
Right.
Training and the wages of each dispatcher. This is additional training that can, um, provide for my dispatchers and myself. So the mandatory training is covered by the state.
Okay.
Luckily that we have the, um, the grant for.
This would include like professional development.
Exactly.
Right.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Um, I don't think I have any additional questions about this. It's obviously a pretty exciting time in your department. So.
Going well.
Uh, yeah, just stay in touch about how all that, but, uh, it's good to know.
We do have like monthly meetings between Southampton and East Hampton, um, police and fighters. So we do all the updates every month and we discuss, uh, the good and bad, if there's any, and, uh, making sure everything runs smoothly and so far it's so good.
Awesome. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay. Uh, from here we will move to, uh, police.
These ones out of the way first.
Easy ones? Yeah, sure. Let's do it.
Animal patrol and crossing guards.
I can't imagine that animal control is that easy. I'm on that Facebook page every day and there's a million dogs that are loose.
Facebook page.
Yeah, yeah.
We're saving a ton of money.
Yeah.
Animals to, uh,
Yeah.
Westfield Animal Control.
Uh, I was just making a silly joke, but let's, let's, uh, yeah.
So the, uh, crossing guards is pretty self-explanatory. It's, um, the crosshairs are all making minimum wage. Uh, we've moved, uh, you can see the numbers have dropped. We've moved since they closed the, uh, elementary schools and brought them all down to Mountview. We were able to limit the number of crossing guards that we have. Um, so that's basically the number of crossing guards, time minimum wage. And the police, police equipment is essentially the stop signs and vests when they come on.
Right. Okay. That makes enough sense. Any questions, councillors?
No.
No. Okay. And then animal control, is this mostly our agreement with, with Westfield?
Exactly.
Right.
There's two pieces to this. One is the animal inspection piece that falls under the health department. But that's for the annual, um, farm inspections, uh, that the, uh, the animal inspector goes out on behalf of the health department to inspect the farms. Um, and then the animal patrol professional services is exactly that, Councilor Peak. It's, um, the amount that will be contracted with Westfield.
Okay. And these numbers have actually gone down just a tiny bit, but, uh, okay. Any questions there? All right. Let's turn to the police budget then. Um, do you want to just give sort of an overview and then we can drill down into?
Sure. Yeah. So the personnel piece of this budget, uh, the majority of that is contractual. Um, like both my police supervisors union and the police patrol union, um, uh, negotiated with, uh, the city this year. They, they finalized the budget. I mean, their contracts prior to July 1st. So we're able to forecast exactly what those numbers are going to be. So when you look at the, uh, personal services, those, those numbers for the most part, um, are contractual, but we can drill down my questions if you guys have them as we, as we go. Um, then in the, the, um, expense report, uh, below, so, uh, much of our expense report has been shifted to IT in a world of technology and, and phones. There, we always have issues with, um, the expense report because like I'll take the automobile supplies. The fleet is so old. Um, oh, as a sidebar, we had our two new cruisers yesterday, uh, that we ordered two years ago. So that's where the auto supply, that's where the auto supply line item comes in.
Right.
Uh, because we're constantly, um, bringing cars down a motor repair, but they're, the labor is there. Uh, but we're still buying pieces and parts. Uh, and then if, if motor repair can't do something, now we gotta send it to Marco. Uh, and then we're paying labor and pieces and parts. So that's one particular line item that we always run into, into trouble on. Otherwise, I mean, I'm happy to go down the expenses if you guys have questions on them, but those are also pretty straightforward. Uh, the one question I get all the time is uniform allowance and the personal services and uniform allowance and expenses. We get that question all the time. The uniform allowance and, um, personal services is the contracted uniform allowance that's paid to the officers. The uniform allowance, um, below is if uniforms get, uh, damaged, it's an actual expense. If uniforms get damaged, um, on duty or, uh, by the way of an example, if, uh, we have to replace a taser because it got damaged during a wrestling bout, uh, that'll be, that's $2,000 right out of the gate for one.
And that comes out of uniform?
Yeah, that's where we would take that.
Okay.
But I get that question almost every year. So I figure I just got ahead of it.
Cool. Now these all seem pretty, um, level, you mentioned auto supply is the one that I'm seeing that we're to date is already over what it was budgeted for, but that's just kind of, you know, what are you going to do about that?
But I'm hoping that, uh, I'm, I'm really hoping that we have two additional cars now. Um, as I said to the mayor, this year we got these two cars, two that we ordered two years ago, but we're going to be in line to get two more. Uh, especially with the timeline of trying to get these vehicles. It'll be two more years before we see. So it's a vicious cycle. Um, and I know, you know, we've discussed fleet, uh, and, you know, we're happy to, uh, turn in the, uh, fleet program. Uh, as I said to the mayor, I just need, uh, quality cars on the street that are safe for my officers. Um, so I'm, I'm open to getting them turned around quicker. Uh, but yeah, that's, that's pretty much it. Um, I'll, I'll talk about overtime for a minute. We expended quite a bit of overtime this year because of, um, we had a lot of, um, attrition, thank you. So, and I had two, uh, young officers in the academy. So I had to fill those beats. I've got another officer that's on like duty, gotta fill that beat. Uh, then we had quite a bit of attrition that took time and turnaround. Um, to fill those shifts because during that attrition, we still have beats to fill, um, on the street.
Right.
So that's where, that's where the overtime comes in. So I'm hoping that, uh, the overtime, we can hold a line on overtime now that we're fully staffed and for the most part.
So just, just to be clear, when you mentioned overtime, so you're paying those new officers in the academy as well as having to pay officers on duty at the same time?
Yes. Yeah, they took full-time salaries in the academy, but we still had to fill their beats on, on the street, which is over.
And how long is the academy? That must.
Uh, now it's 21 weeks. Yeah.
Uh, I know you said that these are, uh, these are mandatory. So I'm not, uh, or contractual. So I'm, I'm not trying to, you know, whatever, but I, I, I own this of the police EMT, uh, incentive as well as, uh, the holiday pay, both increased by like, you know, over 20%. So is that, uh, were there, I was just wondering if you could go into some of the factors that drove that?
Uh, contract negotiations. So as the, as the, they negotiated their salaries, uh, the holiday pay would go up arbitrarily in line with the salaries. Um, and as far as the EMT incentive is, uh, additional folks are going to get their EMT for the incentive and in the training of being an EMT.
Right.
Uh, there are often times that we're on scene, uh, before brothers and sisters next door at the fire department. Uh, there are often times uh, that we're on scene uh, before brothers and sisters next door at the fire department are. Uh, so we can start this level of uh, care uh, prior to the fire department getting there.
Right. So that's, that's what I was, yeah, where I was sort of going with that. So has the number of, of officers who have the incentive increased?
Yes.
Okay. Um, well. Uh, counselor, do you have any?
Well, I was asking the same questions, but also I noticed usually it's, it's not that big a deal, but I'm just, I'm actually curious. Um, remember the dues and memberships, half day is the same, but I see it's a smaller jump, but I'm just curious if, if that's. What that is. Sixty-five hundred, ten thousand, and I'm just, is that like a lot of people having memberships? I'm just trying to.
Yeah, so that's, it's twofold. Um, there's memberships that are required for uh, from the chief's level down.
Okay.
Not required, but they, it's uh. Professional development for sure. Uh, but in addition to that, uh, one of the uh, negotiated contract items was uh. Yeah, ninety-eight.
Legal, legal.
Defense, thank you. Um, a legal defense uh, fund for all of the officers. And that was, that was in, in the supervisor's union. So that, that's where that would come out of. So that's, that's why that job.
And that was part of the contract?
Yeah.
Okay.
Exactly.
I was putting you on the spot.
No, please.
Do, do you think this is a, a fair budget?
Yeah, uh, we're, we, we try to always operate within, within the confines of what we're budgeted.
Mm-hmm.
Um, certainly there's things like auto supplies, like I explained earlier, I think, uh, we always get in trouble with. Uh, but I'm, I'm hoping that the two new cars helps that.
Hmm.
And then. I don't. Yeah, I, 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 we're gonna make it work. Uh, I don't anticipate, uh, like part of. Coming back um, to the council for appropriation, uh, a significant part of that expense piece was because we had. The two officers in the academy and that comes with a significant amount of expenditure that we can't budget because we don't know. That we're gonna have two kids in the academy this coming year. We, we just don't know. Uh. Timings, we can't gauge. Sometimes it feels like I'm gonna go, then they don't go, and they stay, then, you know, um. So with, with, without something happening, uh, if everything stays the course, we'll be okay. If something changes, then, then we deal with it.
Sure. Great, thank you.
Aside from the unknown with the auto supplies and the overtime, what do you see your biggest hurdle as a support to split it?
And I think you hit him.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I think, I, um. Retirement, you know, if, if I have uh, two officers that could retire, that, that's a hurdle. Um, because then we start this whole mayor go round over again. But it, like I said, if everything stays, of course, I'm happy. I have the two kids out of the academy that's gonna save overtime now. Uh, and then the only other thing I always worry about, uh, God forbid, is somebody gets hurt and then we're back in.
Right.
That same spin. Well, yeah.
All right, uh, I think that's.
Uh, this is a great budget, um, example, and fire will be the same where specifically I work with both department heads. Um, and, and pinch them on the exact um, items that you brought up. Uh, they're unknown. Uh, I think that the council is pretty used to um, police chief, fire chief coming back. Um, with my sign off for things like um, repairs, retirement. Um, overtime is a, a, a huge one.
Yeah.
For the reasons the chief um, uh, said, um. But also in the case, and unfortunately we've had some examples of it, of horrific crimes. Happening in the city and it just, you know, really hits like the detective bureau and gathering evidence and, and whatnot and. You know, you never, um, I guess we don't wanna plan for that. Yeah. Um, but that's really purposeful. You know, this is why, you know, my, my feeling is when things are really hard to pin down. Let's keep the budget um, reasonable with the full disclosure of. We might come back for appropriations, and I do think that appropriations are a great way to put sunlight. On these unpredictable um, unpredictable amounts into the public because we have our budget week. And then we go to pass the budget through our process for whatever that is, then. You know, people forget. You know, and, and the um, and. I don't say this in this speci- uh, suspicious way, um. But the reality is, if the, if the money's in the budget in the department, there are um. Policies, um, not at all sneaky, I don't wanna put that out, that the money can move around. And, and within the department, and it's very difficult, nor do I want to, as mayor, say, hey, now we have to cut. Or now like in the middle of the year, rather than um, keep it tight appropriations. Um, and, and go that way, uh, rather than uh. You know, uh, folks talk about, you know, is the budget or department budget fully funded? Um, I, I think every single department head, you give ample examples of things. Um, that they would like. You know, quite honestly, so I mean, I, I know that's come about, uh, Cherokee has brought up questions around that. Um, and my approach, the other approach of putting more money into each department. Because there are unexpected or unknown costs is certainly an approach, just not an approach that I have um. Uh, applied to our budget. Uh, so just to, to be clear, um. I don't, I don't know the last time I've said no to department appropriation team, but I don't know if I've ever done it. I've asked sometimes for it to wait until free cash and whatnot, um, and that brings that kind of smile to the chief's face, um. And, and also to uh, Deputy Chief Benson, um, but. You know, it's never a hard no. They never disappear on my ass.
Okay.
I just piggyback off of what the mayor's saying. In terms of pinching, she's definitely absolutely, that's a great word. Pinch is pretty good. So we're, so we're, we're, the budget letter was a four percent increase in expenses.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and I don't have to tell you what, you know, where we are really with. Before expenses or what the price of everything is.
Right.
Um, but at, by the time we were done, uh, not only did she pinch the four percent. Uh, we wound up cutting expenses by another probably eight hundred dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but well, we're certainly, it's not that it's gonna hurt, and we're gonna be, you know, potentially in trouble. Uh, and then certainly we had some other areas, even if they're contractual uh, uh, items that were, were not. Exactly where they should be, um, but uh, with any luck, we won't have to spend the amount of overtime, so we can move, you know. Rock here to pay fall to make those numbers work.
I don't think the overtime, since I've been there, has ever been one forty, one fifty.
I'm, I'm praying for a nice consistent year of nothing bad happening and. I have my rose colored glasses on.
Okay. Anything else, counselor?
Nothing, thank you.
Uh.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Then for next step.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're gonna have fire and ambulance, and then we'll turn to human services. That's for us.
Uh, for those who don't know, Chief Norris, I am not him.
You can come up if you want. You don't have to, but you can.
Deputy Chief, uh, Benson, uh, Chief Norris is uh, with a contingent of fire chiefs on his. Uh, their way back from DC. Um, he was there on Capitol Hill speaking to our federal representatives to try to get. Um, the assistance for firefighter grant program reinstated. They're talking about cutting that this year and um. That would really be hard on us. Chief Norris has successfully brought in four million dollars. Over the last few years in grant money, which he was saying, uh, for local taxpayer burden, so it's been a great program for us. Uh, it's important that we keep it, so that's why he's not here. Um, please accept his apologies. You're stuck with me. Um, the, the good news is that my knowledge doesn't go anywhere near what his does, but I will do my best to answer any questions I have. Um, but just from a general standpoint, uh, the budget is pretty much a level services budget. Um, there's some contractual increases uh, that are in there. Um, the. Uh, there is an addition of four new positions. Uh, however, it's important to note that that was attained through one of these federal grants. It's a safer grant. Those positions, both pay and benefits, will be fully covered over the next three years. Um, the biggest wild cards that we're gonna see are very similar to the police department. Um, we can never predict. Uh, nor do we want to predict injuries. We do our best to try to avoid them, and some of the training we do actually focuses on that. Um, and it's, it's a dangerous job that we do, and most people that comes to mind, they think about um, fires, but actually. The ambulance, we, we see a lot of injuries on those too, a lot of times we're moving sick people. From um, situations that they find themselves in their home, in their home, we're gonna pick them up. Uh, and they're not always in uh, in shape and the way that they can help us, so um, we see uh, injuries from there. Uh, the other thing is significant incidents like buyers, when we do obstruct fires, we have a lot of overtime that gets incurred with, with stuff like that, uh. You know, there's years that we can go with, with a few number of those and those other years, that there's a lot, we just can't predict that. Uh, and then again. The same with the cruisers. For us, our apparatus, they're uh, multi-million dollar pieces, um, and when they break, they break expensive. Um, so we always pray that they don't break, uh, but sometimes they do. Um, our motor repair does a great job of keeping everything in the best shape that they can, so we can try to avoid that, but it's not, it's unavoidable. Uh, but that's the general outlook for the budget. Um, any questions you guys have? Certainly I'll do my best to try to answer those.
Counselors?
I, I met with Chief Norris, um, had a good conversation, um, and so I don't, I don't have.
And that same goes for me also, I'm with Chief Norris, and any questions I have, I'll answer at that time.
That's also true for me, but uh.
Um, one, we're working with, is it Southampton? Southampton?
Yes.
Um, providing services in other intergovernmental agreement, um, to, to help them out. Um, Southampton, unfortunately, both of dispatch and fire, um, simply can on hire. So, so we're, we're upping um, our support of, of them through the agreements. Uh, notable that um, this is the second safer staffing grant that fire has had. Already four, who are now a part of this budget, and this latest grant actually is a hundred percent, like it, it covers everything. Uh, the chief, um, walked me through the plan for those for. Uh, firefighters to become a part of the regular budget. He's planned for it. He has, he's done it once, he's gonna do it again. Where all of a sudden there's not gonna be um, for salaries and incentives and whatnot. All of the firefighters that we bring on um, are already uh, paramedic level. Or are put on an immediate professional development plan to get that certification. Uh, also, a lot of, uh, there's, you know, small grants here and there that, that have been helping. Um, with, you know, hoses and, and oxygen containers and, and whatnot, so. When you're looking at this budget, know that there are other dollars coming in through grants. Um. I don't know, Chief Norris has been here two years, three years?
Three and six months, but um, it's not just. Written on my shoulder.
The four million dollars that, that the department has brought in is unprecedented. And not just for our department, but across Massachusetts. Um, and that has helped this budget, which would be. Much more um, expensive and um, and so we're. Uh, this is a misleading uh, budget in that there's a lot more money and equipment that's paid. It doesn't show up, uh, show up in, in the expense budget, um, and we have. Some equipment. Finally got the brush truck, I remember that, right?
Yeah, so he got a grant uh, to cover the brush truck, which is, would have otherwise been a very huge expense. Um, another grant to replace our um, air compressor, which fills our um, air tanks for structural firefighting. But with that grant also come um, money to replace all of the air packs for all the apparatus. Um, one of the collaborations that the mayor was referring to was a fire inspection position. That is a shared position with Southampton Fire Department in the town of Southampton. Uh, that position's gonna be doing all of Southampton's inspection, the collective fees, but that is also a grant funded. Um, and the chief would probably be upset with me for saying it. He wouldn't say it if he was here, but he's, like the mayor said, it's unprecedented. He knows how to write grants. Um, the other chiefs in the area will probably get phone calls for this, reach out to him for help with their grants because um. We're very fortunate to have him writing these grants because we've been extremely successful with those. It's, it's really reduced the amount of capital expenditures and also some salaries now too, uh, that we've otherwise had to, would have had to put in the budget.
And just two more comments if I, I mentioned, um, so the. Uh, uh, like Deputy Chief was saying, the uh, the grants that are capital items. Um, are really stacked efficiency. I know, so a brush truck being able to access. Um, the mountain comes into mind with the brush truck, rather than the equipment and hodgepodge. Ropes and everything we use to get on the side of the mountain, to have the brush truck is a huge savings on overtime and, and safety. Um, and, and the same goes with uh, other capital items. The inspection position that um, I was just noticing the grant I signed the grant today. Uh, was a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, um, and that takes care of addition inspections, sure, it helps, yeah. Another city, ta- another town, um, but we're also does, it, it does help us. The amount of solar inspections and the depth are amazing. Um, the chief also has a plan for, uh, if, if this particular grant works out. And Southampton wants to continue in East Hampton, he has a plan to absorb the salary and benefits for the following. Uh, year and, and there's um. Some opportunity for more grant money, we're waiting from the state around regionalization, something um, similar to, to dispatch. So maybe you'll see um, that cost or, or part of that cost in next year's budget, um, inspector wise, but maybe you won't.
Okay. Um. I, I, I have a similar question for the police, but um, there's an incentive item that increased pretty considerably in the uh, fire. And I understand that that is contractual, I'm not challenging it, I'm just kind of curious, um. If you could refresh my memory on what sorts of uh, activities are contributing to that incentive? And is it that more people are getting education?
They are, they're coming in with education.
Okay, fantastic. I guess we, we want that, so, yeah.
Yeah, part of, part of our um, structure now with, it's becoming more difficult to hire. And I think they can say that across the board.
Mm-hmm.
But uh, previously we would sort of pick from a letting of paramedics. We don't have that ability anymore. Uh, we basically have to pick, um, maybe if there's a paramedic, great. If not, we choose basic EMTs and then we train them up. And when they train them up, their incentives change. And so what we're seeing now is basic level EMTs coming into the department who then. Um, become paramedics and that incentive number goes up.
Uh, anything else before we move to ambulance? Um. You gave a fairly uh, high, high level thing, but is there anything specifically on ambulance that you'd like to add to, to that?
Nope. Um, again, just uh, we're hoping with the additional staffing, we'll be able to run that third ambulance even more and, and. Our income and revenue will, will increase. Um, but other than that, it's, it's a pretty. Standard budget, contractual increases. Um, there is a, a bit of a jump there for, um. For animal supplies, but it's actually, if you look at the fiscal year twenty-three, the actual expenditure, what we do spend. And again, when that money's going out in supplies, we are recouping that with um, reimbursements from health insurance and from Medicare, Medicaid, et cetera.
Great. Well, like we said, uh, the chief was anticipated to be gone and had, like, we all had opportunities to meet and go through. Any questions that we had, so uh, it makes your job here a little bit easy and must, anybody else in the city has anything they want to?
Um, I, that's a great, um, Deputy Chief reminds me, so um. The insurance reimbursements that we collect uh, in a third party. the insurance reimbursements that we collect and a third party accessibility for that have gone up substantially since the the chief has joined our team. Note that those fees that come in do not go directly to or for the fire department, but they go into the general fund. And that is the case with other intergovernmental agreements, like what you'll see dispatch. So it's general fund money that adds to our local revenue rather than going to the department who specifically brought those those fees in. Also, I I would say be very clear about the reimbursements through these agreements, regardless of of what they are, do not cover all the all the expenses, like they barely do. And this is not a money making enterprise, like school choice. Like, yes, we have an offset when a child's school choice is in, we have an offset when we're providing ambulance services to another community, but it's not a dollar for dollar. So everything goes into the general pot of general fund and and then we will take grants and we look at, you know, all sorts of things to to piece together the expense budget.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right. Think on public safety. The next thing we have is just building inspection. I don't believe our building commissioner is here.
Yes, I'm on. I'm here.
Is she? Oh, maybe she's on my, my apologies.
Yes, I'm right here.
Oh. Oh, yes. There you are.
Yep.
Now, hold on. I'm not getting any volume. Maybe the volume is down on this. Is that what's going on? Sorry.
Come around.
Yes.
Hear us.
I'm seeing a unmute. Yeah, I just. We're not muted.
Just want to make sure we're on the right ones. Yep, you're not on the right.
BJ, can you, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you just fine.
Okay, great. Yeah, sorry. We we had the, I guess we weren't hearing anyone who was speaking on here, so I apologize for that. That will not happen again. Thanks for that. Can, would you like to give sort of an overview of the building inspection budget?
It it hasn't really changed that much. We had some issue with the lines from last year when we did the budget because we changed it slightly for the electrical and plumbing. But I don't think there's any surprises. It didn't really change much in this budget.
Yeah, it looks to me like the the line item for gas plumbing and wire inspectors went up, but the the line item for temporary positions and alternates went down. Was that sort of a trade off where we're, is that what's going on here?
Well, we went to sort of a different way that they that they were going to be compensated. And so when that happened, and I'm not an accountant, so I I'm not going to pretend that I know, you know, how it was calculated, but it it just, it had to reflect what was approved on the budget last year and the new way that we were going to compensate the plumbing and electrical inspector. So it's not gone up. Really, it's the same. It was, it it just wasn't. Hmm, I struggle to find the right word. It it wasn't, you know, identified properly.
So money's moving from one line item to the other, is that?
Yes, that's correct. That's.
Anything else you'd like to point out or anything that you have any concerns about or anything?
No, I'm, I'm good.
Counselors, any questions?
She's good, so I was gonna ask.
Okay. Well, that was my only question was about the item, the the things moving from item to the other, but those.
I think this is a correct problem. I don't think we should have any, because I had to do an appropriation because it, again, I I struggled with figuring out how that had to be calculated on on the line. And so I was not aware of how it needed to appear, but I think that we've ratified that issue. And it it really is the same. We just moved it from one to the other to make it more clear.
Okay. It does, it does look like the, like the net difference between these two items did go up a bit, but with, that makes sense. I mean, there's a lot of construction going on.
Certainly a part of that. The recalculation of the the gas, the plumbing, the wiring to to be a little more clear on that expense. And we wouldn't expect an appropriation this year to make up the miscalculation. You know, I think you're you're seeing a more, a part of that, little part of that increase is.
Keep. Yes, from getting an appropriation.
Right, exactly. Yes, correct.
Okay, any other questions, anybody? Thank you, BJ. I think that all the questions that we have. And so that should conclude our questions for public safety. So we can move now to human services. Let me just move to that in the PDF. Okay. Well, to start off, we have the health department.
So we're in an interesting place with the health department. We don't have a health director right now, but we also have, we are out of line with the state standards of how public health should be provided, those services. Our Board of Health, which is a very active board by statute, but also by the the members who are there, are working with Ashley Lindsay and Emily in HR to realign this department with the three main, two, three, three main phases of the state's view of public health. Why this is so important and so odd because state standards change all the time. After COVID, both the federal and state government realigned public health services. And it is that structure that will be funded by grants. And public health gets a lot of, a lot of grant money. In large part because, say, our size does not have the revenues to support something bigger. So a little bit is opioid, but others are vaccinations and outreach. You'll, you'll see grants for, we just put in the Healthy Youth Coalition for coordinators and emotional, behavioral and and physical health of our youth is winding down. And we just put in for another five year grant that brings in like $225,000 a year and funds some of these positions. The cannabis money, the less of the cannabis money goes into some of the salaries here. Where we end up with the Board of Health, no, no staff in the department have been let go or hours reduced. We're committed to keep everybody where they are and with the new administration of this department. You know, I think we're going to see a health director and or another intergovernmental agreement for higher cost employees because also we cannot find them. You know, I mean, that's just the reality. The state also gives a bonus for regionalization. So similar to dispatch, our 911 grant is because of the services, but we get a financial bonus of, you know, sometimes it's $10,000 per region or or other municipalities. There's different levels of funding department, Board of Health, Public Health Department is is one of those. And it's, there are other communities that are already getting that money. We weren't in line with the state and they are extremely exacting, like you're on the bus or you're off the bus. And if you're off, then you don't get that grant money.
So when you say not in line, like what aspects of our current, our prior configuration, we're not in line with what the state is looking for us to do?
Yeah, I've been a little bit here. So I've actually been working with DPH Department of Public Health to understand this national framework that's rolling out. And what they're asking for is that all health departments in Massachusetts be regionalized by 2027. Most health departments in Massachusetts are already at phase two of this three part rollout. We are in the beginning stage of phase one of reaching out to local communities, seeing if we can regionalize. And these frameworks get rid of the health director position while keeping your inspectors and your agents and having the community regionalize oversee those departments. We would still handle employee payroll, any punitive actions, things like oversight of our employees, but they would handle the day to day operations in a regionalized program.
Okay, so we'd have a regional director and then local employees who are taking their day to day orders from a regional director.
Yeah, and and the regional money that we've gotten in the past, mostly with Northampton, that method of regionalization, and we saw a lot of this during COVID, with vaccines, with monitoring state and federal software programs is going away. Again, it's, you know, this is the the phase that we're on or going into that structure. We're not there. So we're trying to get there to not lose that regional connection.
I see both of you have hands. I'm just gonna.
So so what does regional look like? Western Mass, Northampton, East Hampton, Holyoke? What what does regional look like?
I mean, we're looking at Northampton. My approach to regionalization is that we make our own micro region. We've not seen a lot of success within the city, but also watching other cities where it is a region, where it's by county, by Pioneer Valley. We're small and we we lose. You know, we're smacked out in the middle of two gateway cities and one quasi gateway city, Northampton. And it's, it's difficult to bring in pounds to regionalize overall, but we can do it contract by contract. And we have much more in common as far as health and a lot of different services with West Hampton and Southampton, which are are struggling even more than we are because we're small. So regionalization can mean a lot of things. My approach has been and continues to be, my approach with the supportive department heads is we make our own region. And there's no, the state accepts that. They're, they don't force us into some configuration.
Sure, but first, okay.
Services aren't lost to residents in any way with through this kind of.
They're, yeah, they're augmented. They, you know, they're added. And it's, the exciting thing about it is the regionalization and the frameworks also augment what ambulance does as far as follow up care. And and does also supports EMS, I'm sorry, police response. So maybe they don't need a transport or further care, EMS or go to the hospital. But the police are on scene to triage and follow up with that. And and the follow up can be from physical injury, emotional injury, behavioral substance abuse issue. As our director of COE is here, elders who have a history of trip and fall, which, you know, need support, follow up support. There's a direct one referral. There is a follow up from the department that identifies that. The regional core is the one basically gets the money and then distributes it more, I mean, not more important, but and they do the reporting. This money is really complicated and and we don't have the staff. We don't have the regular revenues to do that.
I'm just curious. You mentioned that many towns, as far as its regionalization are going on, step two of the roll out, roll out already, but the only step one, why is that? Why is this something we're just looking to now?
I mean, it starts really back in 2017 where our health department was a .5 public health nurse and no one else. We added a inspector who became a health agent. We had plans to roll out and meet those very slowly over the course of many budgets. And then we had a pandemic. And on that, a little bit, I mean, one, we needed those folks, but we certainly leveraged our ARPA money to boost up our systems, our our staff, catch up with inspections, add fees that were, some of our fees had not been updated for forever. Go after some more grant money and we pulled in the Healthy Youth Coalition from schools to kind of amplify and add to the, amplify what the school could do. But we have hundreds of kids that don't go to our schools and we weren't reaching them. And during the pandemic, that became painfully obvious. The other thing that with the number of incidents where people are trying to harm themselves or feeling unsafe, as well as the increase in domestic violence, homelessness and substance abuse all really benefit from a follow up from a social worker for connection to services. We have folks who are in a very bad situation across a lot of domains. And for our for our government, I mean, like regional, state, local, just as somebody who is in a horrific situation. So this is a number in Greenfield and this is a number in Springfield. And and these people who are desperate for health, help. And I, well, we have the numbers. This is in every single precinct in the city. It is not affected by ethnicity or income, and that is stunning. Greenfield and Springfield are too far away and they don't do it. So they pick up 911. And we've got EMS and we are glad to do that. But it's not the level of care and follow up. We want to get to to prevent the the problem. Our county does not have, we're one of the only counties that do not have a Department of Children and Family Office. It's in Greenfield. We don't have an unemployment office and career support. It's up in Greenfield. Our housing support, homeless support, rent assistance support are all in Greenfield. More in depth, mental health services are Greenfield. Those where you're talking about suicide or homicidal ideation, you're referred mostly to Bay State because it's a trauma level. So then you got Springfield. It's amazing. It it's stunning, but we're trying to fill the the gap. One, because we want to serve and keep people safe in their community, in their homes. You know, but but also sounds odd. It reduces costs, both on our insurance and our personnel. So people who are trying in a very specific domain, milieu are responding and and folks aren't being put off, which has a financial cost as well as a physical and mental health cost.
Can I?
Yeah.
To be back on to what the mayor's saying and summarize really quickly.
Sure.
So the national framework and DPH have also emphasized, which hasn't historically happened, is funding. is funding harm reduction and prevention, which we historically haven't looked at in departments across Massachusetts, where it's been focused solely on inspectional services and making sure we inspect restaurants and follow up on food complaints. Whereas now, since the pandemic, they've focused on that and that's where that funding comes from and follows through this framework.
Is there any questions?
I have lots of follow-up questions, but not related to the budget.
Yeah, kind of the same. I mean, this, in that context, this budget makes sense, I guess. That's just something, I certainly think the council would appreciate any updates on how that's going as it's going on. Not to speak for the rest of the council, but I think I can get away with it here. I, it's just, it's an interesting situation. It certainly is gonna be something that we would like to continue to hear about as it unfolds.
It, it's a very sad opportunity.
But, but in that context, these numbers make enough sense. So I don't have any budgetary questions in the interest of everybody's time. I think we can probably move forward unless anybody else. Next up, we've got our Council on Aging.
I brought some treats.
Oh, yeah, I love treats.
Thank you. So the, the Council on Aging budget is so simple and brief that it doesn't convey the breadth and depth of what we do. So when we met with the mayor, I tried to produce some, a couple pieces that would show you in a typical budget year, how do we offer that huge menu every month? Plus all the other things we do that aren't in there. So on the second page of this packet, after our highlights, if I can review really quickly, I just want to show you, so what I did was I put in a sample year, which is this year. So it shows the general fund at the top, which you have there. And then we do take in fees and donations for several things. Van rides, classes and memberships. And then there are gifts made to the Council on Aging. And then we have some revolving old funds that we use for something, say like driver mileage for the volunteer drivers. Each year, there's something else. It could be an earmark for a vehicle. It could be the municipal AD improvement grant that we just got. Plus, this is FY twenty four, there was the supplemental appropriation added to that. So this, so then one year might be higher than another in the overall budget because of an earmark or a special project. But the most significant second source of funding, in addition to the general fund, is the formula grant that every Council on Aging gets. And East Hampton's large enough that what we get is, it's basically the math of fourteen dollars this year, changes over time, times the US Census figures given to the state by UMass. And so that's four thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight people age sixty plus. And we serve, we've chosen in East Hampton, local option to serve fifty-five plus. And of course caregivers with some programs. So that adds up to sixty, sorry, it's right here. It's sixty-six thousand eight hundred and ninety-two dollars this year. And then for FY twenty five, there's a proposal before the legislature to increase to minimum wage per elder, fifteen dollars per elder, which is another four thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars, okay? And so, and I'll talk about what those funds go for in a moment. And then the reason why I have on this budget for FY twenty four, under the EOEA formula grant, it says seventy-eight thousand and change. That's because this is a ten-year grant and we're allowed to roll over funds so that some years, things cost more or there's special projects to do. And that's helpful, as I've explained to this committee in the past, to have that flexibility. So we're able to do that. We're in, I think, entering the third year of that ten-year grant and then the state will renew that. So what do we use, what do we get done with the funds? So the general fund pays for the director, one point four or so outreach workers, which is like a cheaper way of having a social worker and case manager. It's brief application assistance and other types of help, like handing out meals. And then it pays for a portion of slightly more than half of the program manager. It pays for the principal clerk, which is the most recent position that was created. And we're getting a lot of bang for our buck there because the person's not an office manager, but they do a lot of office manager type work in addition to the principal clerk work. And they're also doing transportation. We don't have a transportation coordinator anymore, but we have a big transportation program. So between the principal clerk and then the office aide part-time and the director, we run a transportation program. And then we have the drivers. So we have ten positions. And that is, it's about around half of that FTEs. So I could get that specific figure for you. So another, so then that second most significant, oh, and expenses. So we have, that expense budget for the general fund hides all of the money that goes into the Council on Aging from so many other departments. And I've said this to this committee before, DPW, fuel for those vans, you know, HR insurance for the vans and benefits, IT, various kinds of software and other things. So we're really dependent on those other departments for some of those expenses. And then other expenses, like all the supplies and equipment and materials that we need to have a retail facility, front of house, the furnishings for the participants, the supplies and everything else. So that is where those fees for the classes and the vans come in. For example, we use those van fees for van repairs. And then the formula grant pays for the rest of the office aide, the rest of the program manager and many, many different types of instructors for all those classes and activities we offer. And then a lot of supplies. And one thing I want to call your attention to, and I'll share this with the committee at some point, it's a little rough right now. But you see, so what we have for, in the budget for spurs salary, so it's that figure there plus the twenty-four thousand dollars from the formula grant. However, volunteers and senior tax work off power us to the tune of about a hundred thousand dollars a year in labor hours that are done at the Council on Aging. Many councils on aging have been so dependent on volunteers. That's extremely difficult to run it as an operation. We have a very nice balance. We're, we're still short on staff. Basically, one of our board members who couldn't be here tonight, Tom Brown, said, the city gets a huge bang for its buck when it comes to the Council on Aging because we're doing a lot with, he said minimal staffing. I want to say we have better than minimal staffing. We still do need some more staff and we have a plan for how to staff up at a very low cost to the city as our formula grant increases. And we'll come back and talk about that for FY twenty six. So yes, a portion of it is volunteers, but we would never want our city to heavily rely, you know, more than it does on volunteers. For example, the whole afternoon at that front desk, dispatch and reception is staffed by volunteers. So that gives you a little bit of a sense of how we fund the everything else. As for grants, in addition to that formula grant and those occasional grants like the municipal AD grant. State also makes other funds available right now before the legislature is the opportunity for, to apply for some more grants. And we're partnering with IT now that the city has a digital equity plan. You might not even have heard this yet, but we've identified a couple of grants we could apply for, for up to forty thousand dollars so that the age sixty-plus or fifty-five-plus portion of the digital equity implementation first phase, we could buy devices for seniors. We could modernize the center just enough to be able to offer community computer classes, that sort of thing. So we're trying to align when we write for grants, because grants, it doesn't matter if it's twenty-five hundred, ten thousand or two hundred thousand, there are a lot of work and it's more, it's more, it's more work, it's good work. But it doesn't, it doesn't make up for the, you know, what we would be hoping to do anyway with the city general funds. So we're aligning when we do our work with something. Is it best practices to make a better senior center? Is it that we now have a digital equity plan? Is, there's also money in the future that when we know we're doing public health, we could write these occasional grants to partner with public health. So we can leverage more together. So does anybody have questions?
Sorry, this isn't public speak.
I just couldn't hear, that was awful.
Oh, well, would you like to repeat that part again? Just, I think what you said was that Tom Brown had said that we get a lot of bang for our buck with our, with, with all of our volunteer hours.
What he was saying was that for the amount of money we spend on the Council on Aging and the amount of activities that are produced and services that are produced, we get a lot of bang for our buck relative to how much we spend on staffing.
Well, that was very thorough. I don't have any immediate questions. I'm definitely going to be able to see, you know, what you were talking about, about your plans after FY twenty six. But this is, in terms of this budget, I'm not seeing anything that jumps out and that was a very detailed and helpful narrative. So thank you. Any questions, councilors?
I mean, you all do so much for the community and probably far more than one might anticipate you're able to do, given your budget, right? And so hats off. You know, I want to ask, you know, do you think the budget is fair, right? That's my kind of go-to question for this, but do you, do you feel supported?
Absolutely. When you look around the state and you see that there are towns that don't even have a public health social worker, you know, barely a nurse and don't have outreach workers. And they've got volunteers just doing, you know, Medicare counseling appointments and they're desperate. I mean, I see it every day in the feed of the directors talking. And, you know, East Hampton, early on recognized. I mean, I think we had the first ever outreach worker in the state. So it's really, really important because almost every application for public benefits is online at this point. And imagine trying to, you know how hard it is to wade through that for yourself, your kids and your parents. So that's the kind of service that we provide that keeps people getting their SNAP or food stamps. You know, keeps people getting their fuel assistance and everything else. And we maintain certifications to be able to do all those benefits. So we feel very much supported by this city. Absolute.
Fantastic. And, you know, part of my day job is working on the population projections for the state. So I have some idea that the need for your services is going to be growing somewhat dramatically, as I'm quite sure you're aware. So, you know, that's something that we, we really, you know, we come, we start seeing, you know, the need increase a little bit. Like, we're not going to be completely flabbergasted about that.
Right, that the annual need, but then, you know, the capital need going forward in terms of the building itself and all its issues. You know, that digital equity project has to happen somewhere in the building. And today we stood in the basement classroom and it's, and it's been wet out lately. And you can just imagine, it's wet and cold and, you know, it's not an ideal space to learn computers. And so we'll be back.
Related, not necessarily the budget, but appropriations, you'll see a request, you know, and going forward in the capital plan to form an official Council on Aging building plan similar to what we do with schools and, and again, volunteers and, and the directors' services, like in whatever course of the day you have to do it, to look at physical plan and, and a lot of what the services that have been brought up, including digital equity, which includes scams and folks really taking advantage of elders. That is kind of, it's just starting and I wish it was funded as well as schools. So there's an ad hoc committee that's getting ready to, like, basically post, are you even being on this building committee? And that's, there'll be some of the, some expenses in the actual budget for that, fully staffing facilitator. And then it would be outside to, the idea is to raise services in this budget and, and staff with the idea that it will complement a better physical plan. You know, hopefully generate them later, but the process has begun. I just want to be clear about that.
I have some thoughts about that, but they're not budget-related, so in the interest of everybody's time. But they're not, they're not related to this budget, I should say. So in the interest of everyone's time, I, I'm all set here if everybody else is. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
If anyone has any, globally, if anyone has any questions, I would just encourage you to email the directors. If anything comes up between now and the final vote, something comes to mind. I know this is sort of drinking from a fire hose, so, you know, it is what it is. But thank you so much. That was really helpful. Okay, now we are on to veteran services.
Nice to see everybody in person for a few months. So basically, obviously, the cost of personnel went up quite a bit last year. That's pretty much because the technicality of office, the veteran services requires every community with twelve thousand, population of twelve thousand to sixteen, twelve thousand and more, at the full-time pressure zone. So that's where that lies. Now, between the part-time permanent clerical, the, based on their twelve thousand to thirty-four hours of a veteran agent, based on that ratio, East Hampton's around approximately sixteen thousand. That was really, if I did it, based on that ratio, it'd be really fifteen, fifteen thousand essentially. So I went with six because there's other resources that I can use. We can, there's certain things that overlap with the COA outreach that I can count on. City's wonderful staff will help me out with fuel assistance, you know, SNAP benefits, certain things like that. There's also, I want to get, become a BA work-study site that allows students to come help out. They get paid through the BA. It doesn't cost the city anything. That would be something that I'm going to establish, so that kind of fill that sort of gap there. And then there's also, one of the things that's, that's actually would be helpful in the, in the future. I know it maybe came up in the past as the Veterans Tax Workout Program. There are certain things that will need to be done, for instance, the memorial being kept up. It's been done by the Veterans Council President right now. He's not going to be able to be doing that stuff anymore. So there's a couple of ways we can go about getting that done. That would be one of the options. Another option would be paying the compensated work therapy program through the VA. They hire guys who are in recovery to go out and do certain things and you pay a fraction of the cost. And everybody kind of wins in that situation. So that's, that's two ways to take care of that sort of thing. That's, you know, minor stuff. But we have to, I have to build the Veterans Council for sure to be kind of more independently sufficient. The mayor and the council have been great as far as funding it for different things that they've needed. I think there could be more fundraising there that they could take care of a lot of the stuff on their own. I think it'll kind of bring some of the veterans in the community together a little bit more. And that would be. And, um, that would be ideal. I mean, I, I, I view myself there as just kind of a support for them. And I really want to kind of build a team there to really do what they need to do and not necessarily count on asking for money all the time. Now, there are certain, I mean, does anybody have any questions about any of the other, or anything really at this point?
I mean, the only major line item here really is the veteran agent salary. And like you said, that's now a requirement. We do that full-time. So I don't really have any questions about that. It's still, it's reasonable to me. And, um, I know that this is a, a department that has gone through a number of different, uh, organizational changes, uh, over the last few years. So at some point, I think I would certainly, I can speak for myself. I can't speak for the rest of the council. I would certainly be interested at some point in getting sort of just a briefing about what the next few years are going to look like operationally and what the plan is under this current incarnation for this department and how we can support that. But that isn't necessarily a question pertaining to this fiscal year's budget. So like, I have a bunch of questions for you, but they're not really budget questions. So, um, no, this seems reasonable to me. Do, do you feel confident that you're going to be able to deliver the services you need to deliver, you know, with these resources and the, the things that you?
We'll see at the end of fiscal year.
Yeah, I guess. I guess we will.
But, um, you know, another option is, I know you guys, you know, dissolved the district in the past. And, uh, really, the, to me, the idea of districting is to help the smaller towns around. And it really, when you can get them involved, uh, they get better services and it helps everybody as a whole. For instance, I, I use Southampton as an example. Uh, if we were to form a district with them, for example, we could take out another, uh, full-time clerical person and basically the, our budget would go up by about a thousand dollars. And, um, unfortunately, Southampton's would go up significantly. But, uh, really what that would do is create stability in the department because God forbid something happens to me and I can't return to work or you got somebody who is trained and knows what they can do, knows what to do as far as keeping everything going. And just as an example, I mean, when you guys had the lapse from July to now, there's a lot of benefits that were paid out that shouldn't have been paid out. So I'm, I'm recuperating that money. Uh, I came up with plans to do that. So, um, if that was to happen again, it's very likely that that same situation would come up. And hopefully you get somebody who knows how to recoup the money.
Okay.
I just, I want to make sure our veterans are aborted. And do you feel with this budget, you're able to do that to the best of your ability?
I believe so.
I think, uh, to, just to, um, and it has not been the approach of the city in the past. Uh, and I've learned a lot about, uh, the veterans administration on a federal level and state level. Um, the, i- if folks looked, um, at the number of veterans that receive state money, and, and I had this conversation with you, it's not a lot. Like, it's a hundred and fifteen, right? And it's going down. The, the twist of that is those are folks who are receiving state, um, benefits who are probably missing out on federal benefits. And, and then there are, um, veterans who do not need qualifier or whatnot for the benefits that we're talking about, um, but have substantial needs otherwise, whether that's employment or housing, um, uh, physical care. And the veteran agent facilitates that. So I would not want there to be a miseducation or misunderstanding in the public that the department serves a hundred and fifteen, uh, veterans. Uh, that's the beginning of it. Uh, and there's a, a lot more that goes into the funding, um, from the state is, not that I'm resentful, because I'm not. Um, the unfunded mandate letter we got from the state this, this year, um, about a full-time VSO and, and I, and, and we've talked about building up with that clerical, um, really just surprised us. I, I, I had never known anything about it. Um, we're really lucky to have a, a veteran service agency, which is a certification, um, that was willing to step up and pull together a lot of stuff with very little to no clerical help to recoup the benefits. And I, I will just say the benefits is very complicated. But there is a way, we get a percent of these benefits back, but you have to fill the paperwork out and you have very, you can recoup and, but there's a window. Um, so part of this budget, uh, and, and this department, um, our distribution of benefits, um, and, and distribution, just, just distribution of, um, access to benefits that aren't reflected in this, in this budget. And, um, you know, so for us to have found a, a VSO, a veteran service agent who has not only, um, the experience of the system, but also the experience of serving, has been, it's rare. And it's one of the reasons why it's been so inconsistent. Um, it's very rare. We're very fortunate.
Awesome. Okay.
Yeah, I just, you know, sorry, I didn't mean to. I just hope that, uh, with, uh, the idea is with the clerical too, is to get them trained in the chapter one fifteen so we have someone else who knows how on-base works. And we don't fall into the problem of losing money and stuff and having to contract else. When you contract outside, they do whatever they have to do and no, nothing on them. They can't dig into things the way, you know, people internally can dig into, find these things. So, uh, you know, that's, that's, uh, one of the big goals.
Yeah, and, and I, I would just add to the, you know, talking about years going forward and budget amounts. Another thing I have learned a lot about is that some of these cases that aren't related to the state benefits, um, go on for months, if not longer. So while it's not like overtime, overtime that you see in the, the police and fire, um, additional clerical support often is needed because you don't know when one of those claims are going to come up. Or, or, you know, a veteran didn't realize that we had those support services or realizes through the Council of Aging. And digging in is time-intensive, you have to know, but it's people hours. So I mean, that's what it comes down to. And, uh, the claims are not a quick turnaround, uh, at all. I mean, they're months and months for very important services. Um, so that, that's the other of, of why clerical is, is important now and why indeed there will be an increase, um, in that support.
Just to give one quick example, um, you know, veteran services, comprehensive veteran, there's veteran services and there are comprehensive veteran services. Uh, you know, you can get away with, some municipalities get away with somebody who just runs the chapter one fifteen and that's it. And, you know, that's not right for their community. That's not right for the veterans in the community at all. Um, you know, I have a lot of different cases that I'm working on right now that have nothing to do with the chapter one fifteen. They have, like, for an example, I had someone go, uh, get taken to the hospital in an ambulance, had a two thousand dollar ambulance go. Um, I'm trying to figure out, before I ask for any kind of waiver, it's a low-income vet. Um, I have to find out what his insurance is because I believe his insurance will cover a portion of that. So the fire department isn't going to lose that money because I'm going to find the insurance to apply that before he gets the rest of the waiver. You know, so there's minor things like that, that, all those things add up, you know?
Okay. Any other questions?
Appreciate you.
Thanks.
Well, thanks, and let's keep talking.
All right.
Awesome.
All right. I believe that that is the end of human services and that would be everything that's on our agenda tonight. So unless anyone has anything else they want to chat about, uh, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So, uh, option second, all in favor?
Aye.